At your desk.
Yeah, you're not in there.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the City Council of Satellite Beach, December 4th, 2019, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join Councilwoman Rosicky for a moment of silence and the pledge.
Just a moment of silence. And the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This time we'll move on to Agenda Item 3. Mindy, to your honor.
All right. Go score.
Score.
All right. For those of you that don't know, this is a proclamation to our Satellite High School cross-country team that won states this year. So, I'm going to read a proclamation and I'd like to call your names. I know one of you is missing, obviously, as I found out, getting ready to go run again.
He left this morning for Nashville.
Where is that coming from?
Portland, Oregon.
Oh, cool.
Wow.
Great name.
Wow.
So, I've been a runner for many, many years, and my daughter runs cross-country with the Sharks. She's not nearly as happy as the other teams, but I understand all the hard work and dedication it takes for you guys to do what you do, and it's impressive, and it's amazing, and it's hard work, and, I mean, these people, these kids, they've been in warm line, I can't even tell you how many miles. What do you guys do a week?
One or two more, they were at 80.
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
So, he doesn't get all that, so I think the highest of you is my favorite sport, so I'm so happy to hear it. So, as I start reading, so, whereas the city, whereas the Satellite High School cross-country men's team, swept the boys' team, an individual class 2A cross-country titles on November 9th, 2019, both a first for the Scorpions, and whereas Gabe Montague ran the 5,000-meter course at the Appalachia Regional Park in 15 minutes, 31 seconds, 84 seconds, taking the first-place title and with, and three seconds in front of his teammate and state runner-up Justin Wilson at 15 minutes, 34 seconds, and 95.
Four hundredths.
Whereas the team consists of seven runners, so I will call Gabe Montague up, and I'm going to give you a copy of the... The end of the beautiful conference. I'm sure you stood collecting all those medals there, right? All right. I know Justin's not here, so we'll save one for him. The next one will be Josh Craver. Who I've known for a long time, who doesn't remember me. They were always back, the whole family is like speed racers there. All right, we have Josh Stern. Colby Steger. Aiden Mason. And last but not least, Dayton Law. So, I think Coach Butler wanted to come around and maybe some more, and... Come on, I know you do.
I wanted to thank the City of Satellite for what they did for us, for putting in our track a couple of years ago. Without that, I might not be standing here today, receiving this award. That was huge for our team and for the community. It's a nice thing with community involvement. We do run a lot of miles. We run through the city streets of Satellite every morning, and like I said, it's the most friendly, it's the friendliest community that I've had the opportunity to run through. I've been running 35 years, and a lot of miles, and it's nice that you go through the city, satellite through the streets, and all the residents always congratulating you and saying good morning, and it's just a real small hometown community. These guys weren't just a 2A state champs, they were the best of all four classifications this year. They wouldn't want to be under three divisions as well, 1A, 3A, or 4A. Of the 500-plus high schools in Florida, they were the best of every high school. They went to North Carolina last weekend. We went up to Cary, North Carolina, 48 degrees and rainy. Our goal was to finish in the top two. We ended up fifth. We missed fourth by one point. So, the lower 11 states are all represented there, from Maryland South, so they were the Sinpass team in the 11 states south. So, as I told them, they were a little disappointed, but as I told them, five of our, Justin's not here, he's a sophomore, so we return two juniors and three sophomores for next year. We have two seniors. So, we'll be back at it again hard next year. They've taken a program that was basically non-existent five years ago, and they've been state runner-up, twice state champions now, so awesome group we got.
I'm just finishing reading the proclamation because I sort of got eager, we were going to go, but no. Now that we've got all the guys out, and Coach Butler, I'll finish it up, and I'll say, whereas the Scorpions coach Doug Butler, coached by Doug Butler, credits the success of his team's victory with exuberantly hard training for the class 2A title and recognition, and whereas the victory was a prize for the men's cross-country team for Satellite High School with a chance to compete in the regionals, supported by many enthusiastic families, I feel everyone would do, I understand it, those early morning wake-ups, man, supported by their families and members of the community. And now I, Mindy Gibson, will hereby congratulate the Satellite High School men's cross-country team, the Scorpions 2019 state champions. Frank, you want to come up and get a picture?
Okay.
Congratulations.
See, talk to Mark, okay.
Thank you to the taxpayer dollars, we really appreciate it. Can we get this here too?
Okay. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Thank you, Mindy. We'll move on now to number four, citizens' comments. This is for non-agenda items, non-agenda, I'll open the podium in a minute, non-agenda items. I will take citizens first, citizens and taxpayers of the City of Satellite Beach, and then non-residents for non-agenda items. Now, please, I asked this tonight, and this is our warning, to be civil here, respect the person that's on the podium, and please limit, or please, no talking in the audience when we have a person up here. Last meeting, I got complaints because people in the audience were talking, people couldn't hear what was going on. So, I ask you to please be patient. You'll have a turn up here, and let's have a good discussion on whatever we're doing tonight. If you blatantly stand up, shout out, I will have them removed. I apologize, but that's the rules, okay? So, let's not get there, and let's have a good evening of discussion. Podium's open.
Diane Douglas, good evening, non-agenda item. A couple of council meetings ago, a general consensus of the citizens was, I like Satellite Beach as it is, basically no change, but here I am to present all the citizens, visitors, and Satellite Beach the opportunity to keep something the same, to keep the beaches just as they have been. Yes, I am aware of the Sandy Nourishment Project. Well, with that noted, it makes a difference on a day-to-day basis what you do. Okay. I propose that each of us, and future citizens and visitors, leave the beach alone. Alone, you can make the difference. Leave the Koquina Rock on the beach. Leave the shells on the beach. Remove man-made cement, litter, et cetera. If you need to take something, make sure it's man-made. Everyone, let's get together, and let's keep our beach alive. Let's keep Satellite Beach's beach, Satellite Beach beaches, unique as they are now, with shells clinking across one another on the waves, making music, and helping all the turtle hatchlings imprint this beach noise into their memories. Let's keep our unique and very special Koquina Rocks on the beach. Thirty years ago, even 20 years ago, I needed to wear shoes when I took long beach walks because I would stub my toes on the Koquina Rocks and invariably cut them open. So, I would have to watch every step or wear shoes. Where are those Koquina Rocks now? Don't say they're in your yard for landscaping, please. If you need to remove something, remove these items, well, I forgot my little props, but anyway, there, I have them, but for sustainable landscaping. I call them drift brick and beach creek, which is the same as sea glass to broken glass. Also, bend down and pick up litter. There's plenty for everyone. All right. Please keep your pets at home because there's plenty of other places in the city to take your pets. All right, let's see. Oh, here's another tidbit. Animals on beach, unlawful. Removing Kina Rock, Koquina Rock, unlawful. Taking bags of shells, removing shells from the beach, unlawful. If you really love Satellite Beach as it is, here is your beautiful, unique beach to keep unchanged by Mother Nature. Here's where actions speak louder than words. Keep our beach as it is. Everyone do your part. That speech comes from a gentleman who proudly claimed that he was removing 1,000 pounds of shells from our beach to use in landscaping, as from another woman who actually took her dog down to the beach for a walk with a pooper-scooper. Yeah, that's all I have for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Podium still open?
Mayor, real quick, I'm getting a report that there's no live meeting going on right now, no live feed. I just want to make sure that we, if we need to take a recess to get that...
Just, Mike, give it one second, let's make sure we can get that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it was working, so...
Is it working?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I'm sorry the Satellite Beach relating, uh, cross-country team left because, as some of you may know, I'm an early riser. I've seen them run through our streets. They give a hearty welcome back, and I really like Doug Butler and his comments on our small community and how special it is, because I believe that to be true. And I'm sorry they already left.
Could you state your name for the record?
My apologies, Mike Arnold, 515 Harwood Avenue.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Mike. Podium's still open for residents? I'll make sure I got them all. Okay? Podium's open for any individual at this time, on non-agenda items.
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. As for the preserve agreement, the height limitations, protecting it from the adverse impacts of adjacent land uses and not causing harm, will be addressed through the state oversight since the city is not shown to be off to a good start on protecting the preserve. I also want to talk about the charter review document of 2016, which I will leave on record here, but you guys have a copy of it anyway. It shows intent that the city wanted a hotel over, in evaluating the charter height. I also want to bring up ordinance 1135 that followed. This ordinance was read in March, April of 2017, and to use the city manager's quote, "It was simply a clerical change to match use to the definition of limited commercial in the PUD. It was just matching what the developers' rights are." But the city didn't use the definition that was in the PUD. You added the word "commercial" into the definition of limited commercials. Commercial includes hotel in the comprehensive plan, and that was not in the intent of the limited commercials, not in there. Then, in 2018 video at the Climate Ambassador's meeting of 2/27/18, where the city manager said, "I'm thinking is that we want to let the city council do their job by creating ordinances." Okay, so this is the issue. Yes, I agree this shouldn't be in the charter, but no one is going to vote to get it out. I know that. There's a fear that things are changing, and no one is going to vote to take it out of the charter. The comment before her was talking about going around the charter with ordinances, and then Mr. Fergus spoke up and said, after Ms. Barker's comments, that, "No, you can't do that. It has to go to referendums." All of this points to intent to circumvent the charter. I'm going to state for the record that the will of the people is being disregarded, and even though, and even the conduct that may be considered malfeasance. Perhaps it's time for residents to consider the recult process for council members who are participating in this conduct. Additionally, I'd like to bring up the last council minutes and make, regarding Mike Jaffe, he did not say there would not be rentals on the beach. He, the correct thing is, he said there would not be concessions, and offered to put that in the ordinance. I would like to see these minutes corrected. Two, I'd like to, for the record, to note that the minutes reflect who spoke for ordinance 1177, and who spoke against, because we had 20 people who spoke for and five against, and that would reflect the will of the people, since you were voting on that. And then third thing is Charlie Graham spoke and is on the speaker's list for a resident of Satellite Beach. His address is 09 Iverson Lane, which is in South Patrick Shores. I checked property records. He does not have any properties in Satellite Beach, so if you could correct that. And fourth, I respectfully request, that is very important, that the attorney Beadle legal opinion be added to the minutes pertaining to the request by residents, that this go for referendum be put on record. To quote Mr. Beadle, "Basically, the statute refers to any action taken by local government that affects development on the property to be, call it development permit or development order, and the Florida statutes preclude referendum on those types of activities specifically prohibited." This needs to go on the record because we will be following up with action, and it needs to be in the official record. Thank you.
Thank you for your opinion. Podium's still open for non-agenda items.
John Fergus, 135 Maple. My name was mentioned. I was at that meeting, obviously. The context is, that group was speaking about the commercial zoning on the west side of A1A as part of the Climate Ambassador's group. There was no discussion about the PUD. It was all about commercial on the west side of A1A to adjust things like raising buildings, so you could put parking and storage underneath, just to make sure the record is reasonably complete and things aren't taken out of context, as has been the process with a group of people for quite a long time now. Thank you.
Podium's still open? Here are no further comments. In the citizens' comment portion, go to city council comments.
Do not have any.
Okay. Mark? Same. Mindy?
The only comment that I have, and I'm going to say is, you know, I go to Publix, I go to the post office, I go to restaurants. I hear from people all over the city about what they like and what they don't like. It's not just at these meetings that people come and tell me they like something or they don't like something. So, the decisions that I make are not based on what people say just at this meeting. They're based on comments that I get from people all over our city, from every place I go. So, it's not just who speaks at these meetings where I get my decisions from, and I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, and I have no comments tonight. Okay, moving on to the city attorney's report.
I don't have anything.
Thank you. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind everyone that we will have the Ocean Reef Beach Festival this weekend, this Saturday. It starts from 10 o'clock in the morning until 5:00. We'll have 90 exhibits and vendors, including food trucks, local ocean artists, live music, and more. So, please stop by and enjoy that great festival, and if you live in Satellite Beach, it'd be great if you could walk or bike, because we might have some parking problems. It's getting more popular and popular every year. It's grown. I think we're at capacity now with this festival, but to control the parking, we're hoping that people can bike and walk this year, if they can. I received a thank you letter from Diane Hobgood for Alexis Miller. Alexis Miller is one of our project managers, and she helped quite a bit during this hurricane, and she helped Diane with sandbags prior to the hurricane, and you can see that thank you note in my report. We also received a thank you letter from Marlena Harold for the support of the Recreation Department for the library, Bravard Library Con, and that letter's in my report as well. And we also received an email from Mike Rosas for Shift C at the Fire Department for their outstanding paramedic services, as usual. And I have the update for our ABM contract, which is making several repairs and energy efficiency upgrades in all of our facilities. That report is in my, that update is in my report. I don't think I need to go through each one, but one of the most significant is that the metal roofing and the roofing install for the Pelican Beach Clubhouse will commence on January 13th. I wanted to commend our environmental coordinator, Nick Sanzone. I don't think he's here tonight, but he did the, he led the Solar Expo this past weekend, which was very well-attended. It was really, really good job. I think we had, it was actually John Fergus that came up with the idea to get some solar installers and some of the information out during the pancake breakfast with the Lions Club, so we're going to be working on that next time. And then I also wanted to thank the Satellite Beach United Methodist Church for their grand opening and ribbon cutting for the new playground. That is another, just like we did with the track. When we provided funds to that track, we also opened that up to the public before that track was always closed in the evenings, and now it's open to the public at certain times of the day, and as well as the Satellite Beach United Methodist Church playground. So, we did the same thing where we provided a capital contribution, and now that playground is open to the public, and that relieves us from property acquisition and maintenance. So, it's a good deal for the city and a good deal for the users of the facilities. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Council, any questions for the city manager? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. At this time, I'll open up a public hearing on Agenda Number 8, to discuss, take action on ordinance 1177.
Ordinance Number 1177, in ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Bravard County, Florida, amending Section 30-903 Sub 3, Satellite Beach City Code to allow hotels and hotels with conference centers as permitted commercial uses, amending Section 30-914 Sub A, Satellite Beach City Code to reflect single-family residential uses as allowed uses in the Pelican Coast North District, PCN 3, amending Section 30-914 Sub B, Satellite Beach City Code to allow the limited commercial uses set forth in Section 30-903 Sub 3, Satellite Beach City Code as permitted uses, amending Section 30-914 Sub E Sub 3, Satellite Beach City Code by removing the maximum stories a building can be, amending Section 30-914 Sub E Sub 4, Satellite Beach City Code regarding maximum building length, creating a new Section 30-914 Sub F, Satellite Beach City Code to establish minimum development regulations for detached single-family residential development, making editorial changes to Sections 30-903 and -914 to update code references based upon prior code amendments, providing for severability, providing for repeal of inconsistent provisions, and providing an effective date. That's the second reading of ordinance Number 1177.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance Number 1177 on second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Brymer, second by Councilman Montanaro. Before I open up for public comments, any comments from council at this time? All right. At this time, I'll open up for the podium. You have the list?
Mike Arnold, to be followed by John Fergus.
Good evening. Mike Arnold, 515 Harwood. I had a lot of my concerns cleared up in the last day or so. Mrs. Barker's gotten back to me, and I just want to make a few things clear to myself. The ordinance 1177 only applies to the PUD and nothing outside of the PUD.
That's correct.
And in reading the full ordinance, I do see that we do have a height restriction of 85 feet and a width of 224, so that alleviates another one of my major concerns. I also want to make sure that this will not bleed outside of the PUD, that we won't have these conversations in the years ahead, that it's working its way down A1A, and this is strictly confined to the PUD. And that's what I want to, council, and Frank, you've been here longer than I have, and you're here before Lansing Island and before Tortoise Island, and you know what this place means to us.
I understand.
And, you know, it's a, it's a very personal thing when you grew up here, and you lived on that beach in your teenage years, and you're a member of LOMs and all these things that predate a lot of the residents who live here today. I get frustrated when I hear a sustainability board member say, "We're tired of this sleepy little town." Well, that goes against everything that we really cherish about Satellite Beach. We like our sleepy little town, and I want it to stay that way. One other thing, and I've mentioned this in the past, is I do believe that the beach caster needs to offer up more information of things that are of great importance to the community. There's, it's nice that we get the social report on the front page, but really, you're spending tax dollar monies on that glossy, beautiful newsletter, and it really needs to contain facts about our city, like this ordinance, in detail. If I hadn't come tonight, I wouldn't have had the full ordinance. There may have been a link on the website, but it wasn't in the, it wasn't a part, you know, I didn't see it. I apologize. And I watch a lot of the videos, and I read the minutes and things. So, when I got here tonight and I read the ordinance, I was much more comfortable with where we're headed on this. Again, just keep it in the PUD and keep Satellite Beach Satellite Beach. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike, very much for your comments.
Okay, next is actually Diane Douglas, to be followed by Ashley Merritt. Ashley Merritt?
Good evening, everyone. There, there's something I wanted to address with the council about future and change. So, there's a company that I want to discuss with you guys that now owns 20% of the entire U.S. consumer lodging market, Airbnb. Airbnb HomeAway VRBO, before I walked in this afternoon, there were over 75 homes, rooms available to me of our own Satellite Beach residents to allow for access accommodations. Did you know that American consumers have spent more at Airbnb than they did on the Hilton and brands such as DoubleTree and Embassy Suites? Airbnb has long felt like an existential threat to hotel companies, and it is now proving itself to be. U.S. consumers spent more money on Airbnb last year than they did to many brands such as Hilton, and they are approaching the Marriott. The data I am quoting is from a site and research firm called... The data I am quoting is from a site and research firm called Second Measure. They do data analytics, consumer reports, credit card consumptions, and they have clients such as Ancestry.com. The concern I want to raise to the council to consider is a dying market. There are five hotels within six miles of us right now. As consumers continue to choose options like Airbnb and VRBO, I'm worried that we're going to invest in a market that's dying. We're going to end up with a half-empty hotel along with a strip of other half-empty hotels, when people and millennials and younger individuals are choosing for a unique and different experience. So, about a third of Airbnb's customers come from populous coastal states, California, New York, and Florida. And with, according to the Orlando Weekly, over 300,000 new residents moving to Florida yearly, that's going to fluctuate and inundate our market. In addition to Airbnb getting involved in individuals' homes and rental properties, they've also begun to snuck into the hotel business as well. They purchased, they struck a deal to acquire a site called Hotel Tonight, so it's a platform for finding last-minute hotel rooms at discount. This is already eating away into a hotel market that appears to be declining. So, an annual sales Hilton in 2018, based on data from U.S. travelers, Airbnb is also gaining on Marriott, which is one of the largest hotel corporations in America. Annual sales at Airbnb have increased twice fold from 2013 to 2018. In 2018, 12% of major customers made a booking with Airbnb. That's up from 1% in 2013. Seven hotel groups, and included in this analysis, included more than 50 subsidiary brands ranging from Days Inn to Ritz-Carlton. And while Airbnb has tripled in sales, hotels have remained stagnant.
Time?
Yes.
Time? Thank you. I didn't hear Brother Shears.
Is the buzzer, we need to have a lot of smaller buzzers so we can hear it.
I know. I won't have it. That's why I said time. So, Thomas Walker, to be followed by Matt Fleming.
Thomas Walker. I'm getting all my information from social media, so you'll have to forgive me if I'm inaccurate in some of what I'm saying, but I've read, I think, every post on Facebook and every post on Nextdoor about this development. I think it's important that this is done right. It doesn't necessarily mean making it harder for the citizen to use his property as he sees fit. I read this all the time. We need to make it harder and make it harder. That's no way to treat our new neighbor. I don't believe that's the right way to treat our new neighbor. I look at this development as a potential for more jobs, permanent, temporary jobs that we need desperately. It will bring revenues into the city for growth and deter future income requirements, bring pay privilege to our businesses, which they are all in favor of. I have talked to so many people in town, and I haven't found a single one that opposes this development on actual facts. I'm hearing so many things about moving all the height restrictions in town, building on the beach, overrunning, being overrun by new hotels. And none of this is factual. It's just, it's a little frustrating. Satellite Beach is a sleepy little town on one hand, but on the other hand, we're a vibrant and thriving new city. We have to deal with the fact that this entire state is growing. We either grow with it, or it'll pass us by, and we'll miss all the advantages of proper good development and making room for our children to live here also, so our children don't have to go across the bridge to live. I'd like my children all to be able to live here with us. I see people that are talking about potentially moving into this new community and vacating their homes so my kids could afford one of their homes. I think that's important, to do this. I support the view. I support the council, the support of the council for the decision, and I hope this goes forward without any further outside interference. Thank you very much.
Fleming, to be followed by Sandra Sullivan.
This is public comment on the ordinance 1177. So, there is obviously a chaotic information environment out there. Listening to people come up here and comment honestly and not know what's actually happening is challenging to listen to. And in the course of the last two years, yeah, I've been coming to these meetings, I've been studying all these issues, there's been a lot of that, a lot of obfuscation, a lot of prevarication. The simple fact is that with the land development regulations in this city, there is nothing that permits an 85-foot-tall commercial tower. And that's just true. There are, the PUD was originally designed to house three 85-foot-tall residential towers. So, adding a hotel is, I mean, and with all the other issues combined, the contamination, the conservation lands, the issues with infrastructure, it's a boondoggle, and that has to be apparent at some point. It is, it's 100% true that the charter says you can't raise height limits without taking that to the voters. So, trying to add 85-foot-tall commercial tower outside of taking that to the voters, I mean, is that malfeasance? It's something that you guys are trying to get around rules that were put in place by the residents in order to appease some people who I don't know, but, you know, building a giant hotel in a residential neighborhood should strike against common sense. I could go on and on about this. I will be at the Ocean Reef and Beach Festival this weekend at 1:00 on the beach to have a community meeting. I think that if the city wants to try and build an 80-foot-tall hotel without taking an actual ordinance to the voters to approve or deny, is what it is. And we'd like to see an end to just the level of misinformation coming out of this city ball with respect to development in our town and the project on the beach. The reef is getting buried. We already built two giant buildings across Republics, and now we're building more. So, what's going on? Thank you.
Sullivan, and then the last speaker is John Fergus.
Sandra Sullivan. South Patrick Shores. First, I would urge you to postpone this decision to another meeting. Your staff told me the city does not have a copy of the Air Force Agreement pertaining to their requirements for the PUD. While the PUD was adopted in 2000, agreement for the districts within the PUD was reached in 2004. These characteristics and standards were amended in Exhibit in 2004 by the Air Force with revised proposed characteristics in Exhibit DP-1 PUD Land Use Plan. The number of units, for example, changed in 1999 to 2004 because the Air Force required all 171 acres south of what is now Shearwater instead of a portion of 90 acres, which removed also the five acres of what was set aside for commercial development in the southern section of the PUD. That was removed. I have a paper, I forgot to bring it up here. When I'm done, I'll bring the paper up and give you guys all a copy. The calculation of FAR, which is the density calculation equivalent intensity for the hotel, does not conform to the comprehensive plan of a FAR of 1. It is 1.3. It is 30% higher than allowed by the comprehensive plan. The PUD has to conform, according to its regulations, to the comprehensive plan. So, it says, "Compliance with the city's Satellite Beach Comprehensive Plan and consistent with the land use designation denoted on the land use map." It is not in compliance. Three, the limitation of three multifamily building limit was not in the concept plan. Charter review in 2016 document Resolution 791 is referred to as adopting the PUD. You see only Section 1 and 2 are about the concept plan. Section 3 is about roads being private. 4 is about the Air Force Agreement and the number of units that are permitted, and Section 5 is the number of 85-foot buildings being limited to 3. In the charter, number four, in the charter review when the city was talking about amending the land use, the city attorney wrote his legal opinion regarding the M-U-R-L-A change. His legal opinion then, which I will bring that up as well and give you guys a copy, but it's in that charter review document, was to change, to add a hotel to the PUD would have to go to referendum according to the attorney's own letter to the city. Thank you.
Hold on, ma'am. I think, was John up first?
Yes.
John? Okay, that's fine. Ma'am, you're welcome to speak.
Hello, Sharon Stewart, Melbourne Beach. Thank you for letting me speak. This area is really special, and it's under a lot of attack from pollution, and it's really now is the time to really step back before we make any really big changes like a hotel that big. And especially in that area, if you're thinking about putting a Skyway across there, people don't use those things. They don't use it down in Crown. They won't use it there. It's going to cause more traffic, more pollution. Please, I don't want this for my community, for my county. I've lived here my whole life. I think this is not the way to go. And from what Sandra spoke about and from what other people have spoke about, it's not a good idea. It's not a safe investment. It sounds very risky, and it doesn't even sound like you're following the rules. So, please, don't do this. Thank you.
John Fergus, 135 Maple. Hotels. This isn't your average market. Folks in SpaceX are looking for someplace to stay. Virgin Galactic, these folks aren't going to stay in your average hotel if they can get something else. And who knows? They might like the area enough that they buy one of those homes that's being built next to it. I'd like to address some things to the public, especially those listening to this. Beware of social media. The lies and misinformation are rampant. We've heard it here tonight. And all I can say is, do you want to take your information from professionals such as a attorney with decades of experience in government law or from biased laypersons who have a, something to, you know, that they want to, want to try to make a deal on? And just a couple of things, like right now, on the beach, it's not on the beach. And finally, in the '90s, we had a guy named Malone, and just for those that are thinking of a lawsuit, he filed eight lawsuits against the city while he was a member of council and afterwards. The courts threw out every one of them, most of them with prejudice, which meant that he was not allowed to bring that same issue back to the court anytime later. And at the end, the city sued and got $88,000 in the city's legal costs from him and the attorney who helped him file those lawsuits. So, be careful what you do. Let the good times begin. Thank you.
We got, nobody else? That's fine. I was just making sure there was nobody pre-signed out. You're welcome to speak.
Dan Williman, Carriage Park. I've been up here repeating myself, I don't know how many times now. You don't have to listen to social media to know. You don't have to go to Publix, to go to the park, to go wherever was listed, to know that the people here don't want this. I'm tired of repeating myself. I'm tired of bringing this up again and again and again, you know? To touch on a point that Mr. Fergus just made, you want to listen to a legal professional? She's got one. She had him send a lawyer to you guys, or send a letter from that lawyer to you guys. And in regards to misinformation on social media, a couple of weeks ago, I think it was around the time of the 20th, this was before Thanksgiving, this is a long thread, and I'm told it's not the only one, that involved Assistant City Manager saying, oh my God, there was like 90 comments in this thread, throwing poor Sandra under the bus, all kinds of, all kinds of nasty stuff, that she's a fraud, that she's stealing everybody's money. Screenshots have been taken, and if she decides to file suit, what can, you know, you want to talk about lawsuits, don't let your staff do stuff like that. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to speak.
Please.
My name is Rosemary Alexi-Golick, and 537 Wilson Avenue. And I would like to speak for the people who are over 65, all right? And I will tell you, I've talked to a lot of people, and nobody wants a hotel. Nobody wants a hotel. And I will tell you that so many people my age and older have lived here a long, long time, 30, 40 years, and they do not want a hotel. And they chose this area because they didn't want to live in Fort Lauderdale, where there are these gigantic buildings all along the beach, and those two monstrosities across Republics, nobody likes. And the thought of having four more of those is like, I'm just telling you, the people over 65, and I'm over 70, they don't want this.
Podium still open? Any further speakers? Okay, at this time, close the podium. Courtney, do you have anything you want to respond to any of you?
I don't even know how to start. The, when we talked about misinformation on social media, I think an incident this weekend has finally pushed me to the point of really getting upset with some of the actions of some of the people that have been dealing with some of my staff in the city. And I think I'm going to go through some of that after I talk about some of the things that were said this evening. Mr. Arnold wanted, he was concerned about bleeding into other areas, and that is a concern that we're hearing. There are people, and I think, you know, a lot of people feel that when they talk to someone, that that's everyone, and it really, you know, that happens a lot, and we all see that, you know? But there's, you know, there's people for the project, and there's people against the project. But there is the concern among most people that, you know, if this is built, you know, we like the idea of a hotel, but we don't want it everywhere, you know? And that, when we did the memo that people are citing is from Mr. Beadle, actually is talking about that, because we were actually talking about the properties on the west side of A1A in one of those memos, and that's the commercially zoned and commercial land use properties that have a height of 35 feet. And we were looking at providing stormwater, and those were the climate ambassador meetings. And those would have to go to referendum if we wanted to get a height amendment. The other one was for the 100 acres, and the 100 acres, we refer to, the PUD is 248 acres. We refer to the 100 acres as the property south of Shearwater Parkway, and the 27 acres is the site that we're talking about this evening, and that's north of Shearwater Parkway. So, the memo that everybody's citing is actually not talking about this property. It's talking about the property south of Shearwater Parkway. But to address the concern about bleeding into other areas, everything else in the city city, anything, and any height change, has to go to the voters in our code. So if we look at a zoning district and we say, hey, you know, that thirty-five feet, we need forty-five feet, we would have to put that to the voters. So any height amendment would have to go to the voters. The Beachcaster, and Mr. Arnold also brought up the Beachcaster, he talked to me about that in another forum, and I think it was email, about using it to be more specific about this project. And I was gonna speak with you later this evening about that, and asking if we could do a, you know, dedicate the next Beachcaster to the front, and either have that come from me or the mayor, or, you know, for the next Beachcaster. Regarding Airbnb, we don't allow Airbnbs in the city of Satellite Beach, so if there's any operating, we would need code enforcement to go out there to tell them to stop operating. So we don't allow that in the city, and the reason why is numerous reasons. We don't allow many hotels to be next to single-family homes. That's just a common, you know, we, that was a zoning ordinance that occurred in two thousand and seven, and that is...
Bye, ma'am. See ya. Thank you. I'm sorry, I pronounced that before, we're not gonna have people's list out. Thank you.
So if that's a complaint, we can send code enforcement to the side on the street.
I've actually heard several complaints about those, by the way, and it's definitely a problem.
So we need to, we have a limited staff, so we have to know about those, but we have actually a court case going through the process right now. So we are very, you know, strong and advocating to keep our neighborhoods, long-term neighborhoods that, with long-term residents, not a constant turnover of visitors. So that concerns our residents more, I think, than anything else, is that their neighborhoods are turning into vacation homes. So that is something that we deal with through code enforcement and through the courts. We don't allow those in the city. The state is not taking over the city and the property. We received an email from the state of Florida. I'm gonna read it right now. Hold on a second. I had it pulled up. The state sent me an email. I have it on file. I'll forward it to the council, but basically, the bottom line was, we don't have any authority to control development off-site of the property that's under agreement. That if we did impact High Tower Beach Park or any of the preservation lands itself directly, like if we, you know, when we, if the property does move forward with the preliminary plan and they want the bridge over to High Tower Park, that would have to go to the state for approval, and at that point, they would look at it, but the physical development of a property next to, across from a four-lane state highway is not under their purview or control. So I have that email on record. There is no contamination on this site except for PFOS contamination, which affects the whole state, the whole country, the whole world, so, I mean, unless we're, you know, I don't know, I don't know how many other times I need to say that. We have numerous studies that show that, there's just, there's no contamination other than PFOS. The charter says that if we change our regulations to increase height or increase density, it has to go to the voters. The ordinance that you are passing tonight does neither. This does not have to go to the voters. There is no air force agreement that we have in our records. The attorney looked, so we'll keep looking, but I don't recall one, and neither does he, but we'll keep looking, but we don't know any. The density is set by the comp plan and the zoning regulations. I already spoke about the attorney letter. Those letters have nothing to do with the property that we're talking about. I understand Fort Lauderdale is a fear. Just to let people understand, the Fort Lauderdale has a height limitation of a hundred and forty-five feet, I'm sorry, four hundred and forty-five feet. This property is eighty-five feet. We have a long way to go before Fort Lauderdale. I know there's the fear, but it's just not, we're not even close. And we have, after this property, every other property, if there is anything over the current height limitations of sixty-five feet on the ocean and thirty-five feet on the west side of A-1A, it has to go to the voters. Okay? I wanna talk about some of the issues on social media. I have, there's many times when you don't tell people the answer they wanna hear, they will start the personal attacks, and that's currently happening now. So I've seen, you know, a lot of people will send me or call me and say, hey, you gotta look at this, you know, I'm worried that this is affecting you and your reputation. One example is a Mr. Tyler Kelsey said, "How do we get the state's attention?" A trustworthy confidential source, it's always a trustworthy confidential source, said the city manager was going under investigation by the state for previous years of mishandling of financial finances due to losing over one million each year. And Mr. Fleming responded, "I think Sandra is handling that." So I want to make sure everybody understands that this city, since I've been here almost seven years, we have received an award every year for our budget, and we have done, received a clean audit every year. In the last two years, since Brittany Jumper has been our comptroller and our support services director, we've received an award for our audit. So the idea that we are losing money is absolutely ridiculous. I do not make a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year. Okay? I just don't. I wouldn't mind making a hundred, but I don't. I make a hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars a year, and that is considered to be comparable to other city managers in the area for a city this size. I don't, I have a high tolerance for this stuff, because it happens quite a bit, you know, fire the city manager, this and that, but what bothers me the most, and you've got my attention with this, is when you stage an instance in trying to trap my staff into doing something and putting it on YouTube. I think that behavior is disgusting. This fire department has responded to, in the last three months, nine vehicle crashes. One was head-on, one was a rollover with entrapment, a motor vehicle crash with pedestrian, two EMT calls with difficulty breathing and advanced airway measures, a gunshot wound to a chest, two structure fires, one was yesterday, right, or today, I'm sorry, today, two hundred and twenty-seven medical calls. Four of them were cardiac arrests, and three of those people died. One, they delivered one child in the last three months. This is the stuff they do every day. So if you can think about having to walk into the stuff that they have to see every day, you walk into what they do, think about what they do. That gunshot wound to the chest, I can guarantee they probably helped that family clean up the blood, clean up the house. So when you do that, you think about that next time, when you start wanting to stress them out on a daily call, that they're just trying to do their job. Okay? That's all I got.
Thank you. I'll start. I am one of those over sixty-five. I've been here a very long time, probably as long as anybody in the room, except my boyhood friend who, his father and my father came down here together. And I do believe we've tried to strike a happy balance. Everybody keeps talking about Oceana, and it's very interesting to me, because we saved another piece of property from getting a fifty-two-year-old condo, because we traded. And there, we have forty percent of the beach. We can't tell those people they can't build it, zone for there, there was a hotel there. That, we need balance. And I hear a few people here that says, "The community is not for it." I can't tell you how many people have stopped me on the streets, you know, and some have been against, and some have been for. I'm gonna tell you, in my instances, the group of people that have approached me, it's eighty percent for, twenty percent against. And I realize there's people here that are against it, but there's ten thousand, five hundred people that live in our city. We have probably around seven thousand voters. And I've lived here long enough, been on council long enough. If this was a huge, giant issue in our town, as many huge issues are aware, this place would be absolutely runneth over with people. I mean, I've been on, you've been on it, many of us here have been on it. And I think this is a good balance there. The height has been that since day one on this property. And you have to realize, what was there prior? There was no drainage, there was no stormwater. It was the base housing built in the late forties and fifties, and we're getting something better for our city. And, you know, I don't, do I like that as being, if, to be honest with you, if I could go back to nineteen fifty-six, sorry, Kevin, and go back there and say, "That's the way I'd like this area to stand," there wouldn't be many in this room here today. Your houses wouldn't be here, because there was nothing here. And, you know, we have a city that has taken the forefront of sustainability and, you know, banning round-up, the use of round-up styrofoams. We went to the restaurants and asked them to please, you know, help us through not having single-use plastics. So it's a balance. I don't personally think it's the greatest thing, but it's legal, and I'm gonna go with my legal counsel on this. I am not an attorney, but I have done my research with many attorneys on this, and there wasn't one that came to me and said, "You could not vote for it and be legally right." So, you know, we've done our homework, the staff has turned over every rock, and to say the land's polluted, there's nothing report that I've seen that has stated that. The water, the groundwater, yes, we know that, but there has been nothing else. So I can't take hearsay unless there is facts here for us. I'm not a scientist, I'm not an attorney, but I have to go by to make a logical decision on the facts that are presented to us. So that's all I have to say. Anybody else?
Go ahead. You know, one thing you haven't mentioned, Frank, and is that we had this vote for this annexation. How many years ago was that, that we had the annexation?
The vote was in two thousand.
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight.
That was a long time ago. And you were part of this, I know Dominic was a part of this, thank you, Jim. Jim was a part of this. And when Courtney came on as the city manager, one of the first things that I know I said to her, and that was seven years ago, was, "What's going on with the property? You've been working this issue for years." As a city council person, I don't know whether you remember or not, Frank, when we did our little thing over there at Scotty Culp, when they interviewed the candidates, what's gonna go on that property and all that sort of thing. We didn't know that at the time, you didn't either, when we were working it, based on what we knew, but one of the promises that we made was that we would deliver what the citizens wanted. They were very, we annexed that property so that we had control over it, and we didn't have, if it went to the county, it could've done any number of things. So I look at this as a seven-year project, Frank, that we've been working on, Dominic's been working on, and I appreciate you two ladies being a part of this as well, that we're delivering a product that we've been trying for a long time to deliver. And it's nice to see, and it's coming together, and I think we've got, we've been working with Mike and the builder, I think it's a good project. It's gonna, by your numbers, it's gonna help about one-point-two-million dollars in income come into the city and solve a lot of our problems on just maintenance of fifty, sixty-year-old buildings. So I think we've done the right thing. It's, I think the city residents who haven't been here for that long don't realize how long of a process this was and how much work went into it. And I said this last, I wanna thank you and your staff for going along with this, and, you know, and Mindy and, and, yeah, no, I was, you're gonna say, wait, I have, Mindy and Jody will say I'm both, for diving into this and taking a part of something that you guys didn't have anything to do with when it first started, and you've come up to speed on this and embraced it and at least knowledgeable on it. So I think it's been a good process, but in my mind, it's taken this long to get to this point where we're doing a good project and we're delivering something that has, as you and Frank have said, dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's. So I'm for it, and I'm gonna support it like I did the last time. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Who else? Mike, sweetie?
I have something more. So I just wanted to talk about two things. So the one's the PFOS. I think we all know at this point that there is levels in the ground, but right now, there are no, currently no standards whatsoever for groundwater. I don't foresee it happening anytime soon. We've been to DC several times about this, not just once, it's been several visits. It's been several visits with our local, not local, our state representatives, trying to get some sort of legislation. And if you wanna be fighting a battle, that's a battle you should be fighting. It should be something that everybody should be writing letters about, because we don't know how these chemicals affect, I've browbeat this over and over. I don't foresee that even what is at that ground level to be what they would set the ground level standards at, even if they did, by the way. But if the government doesn't set a standard, it's not considered a contamination to a certain level. So we have to, I don't know, I guess the terminology saying that it's a contaminated site, it's, I mean, I think, you know, if you put fertilizer on your ground or ever-spread round-up, you're going to, there's going to be something in your soil, by the nature of who we are. I found a car battery, I've said this many times, we dug a post, I had chickens, and we put a fence up, and we found a car battery, like three feet down, a car battery, okay? People are pretty filthy, you know, and so they bury stuff left and right. They found a bunch of tires buried under someone's driveway. They used it for, I mean, that's what they did. So for that, that's a battle I'll continue to fight, because I just think without any regulation or any kind of guidelines, we're all just kind of walking in the wind and we don't know what's going on. So the other thing that's very important to me is the Airbnb conversation. You know, I guess, there's two sides, this is, I'll give you my opinion. If you ask me what's worse for a community, an Airbnb or a hotel, I would say Airbnb every day. So first of all, they remove affordable housing, because what happens is any property that someone invests in, what they do is they're no longer gonna rent it out, long-term rental to people. Now, it's typically what the people, when you can't afford to buy, you have to rent. Now, when you remove all the rentals off the market, because you're renting them weekly, and there are cities and places where that, there is a place for that, and I'm not adamantly against them in general, our city does not need them. Okay? So they remove affordable housing. It's a major issue in Florida right now, affordable housing. We're just in DC, Marco Rubio was supportive of it, and he recognized that Airbnb was one of the biggest contributors to that issue that we have. Most of the people that work in Florida, other than the engineering industry, are working in the hospitality industry. They don't make a lot of money. There isn't very many places for them to stay. So I will fight Airbnbs in our city until my dying breath. So I don't know, I might be fighting it for the rest. I do understand that is the future, but if there isn't very strong regulation, it will destroy cities. It already has in Florida. So that's just my one thing.
Anna Maria Island is closing their library and their schools right now, because sixty-six percent of the city is now Airbnbs. So, you know, be careful what we ask for, and that's where, you know, everything is a balance. And Indian Harbor Beach, they don't have an ordinance, so they are fighting Airbnbs even harder than we are. And there, they had an incident where a movie industry, not our PG, PG thirteen or G.
Adult movie industry.
Rented an Airbnb, and the actors went into the wrong unit to do cocaine in the bathroom. So those are some of the stories that, you know, come out of this. And that was in a gated community. And there, so this is a fight that, you know, all communities across, especially coastal communities across Florida are engaged in, and we're at the state constantly, it's one of our legislative priorities, to keep our grandfather-in-class and to get Airbnbs under control and regulated.
We, I do wanna note that they are allowed on the east side of A-1A, which is something that I'm not totally against with the condo situation, but it's in the residential neighborhoods that we have to be very careful with what we do. And as for the hotel, I mean, I've said it, you know, I am supportive of it, I'm supportive of the development. I don't, I, eighty-five feet is not something I love, okay? It's something that if I had been here twenty years ago and I'd had a say in it, this wouldn't be happening, it wouldn't be happening. But this is the cards we are being dealt with right now, and I believe that this is the best choice, other than a whole bunch of multifamily units or a whole vacation rental property. So, you know, I... rental property. So, you know, I'm for it, so, at this point.
Any other council member like this?
I was just gonna say, I have said no on each of these votes, but I am not against this entire project. I just want that to be clear. There are a lot of things built into this ordinance eleven seventy-seven, there are many aspects to it. And the one that I have kind of been saying no to each time is the building width, simply because I know that many years ago, when you all planned this out, you had reasons for the height and the width and the setbacks and all of the rules that were put into place. And I just feel like those should have been followed. So I feel like, you know, all aspects of this project match the zoning requirements, it's set for what it's set to be set for. I'm sure that I and my family will enjoy the hotel. I know that people will, will get a nice class of people moving in there, and I think that's good for our city. I think as we go forward, we still have a lot of questions and things to work through to make sure that this project is the top-notch project that we anticipate it to be. And I know that's not a discussion for tonight, so as we go, you know, there'll be a lot of little nuances, I think, that we'll want to make sure are covered.
Thank you, appreciate it very much.
I kind of saved myself for last because I want to touch on some of the things that I've already said. We moved density off of the beach when we took over all of the properties that we took over along A1A on the beachside. And it was done intentionally to move that density to the west side of A1A. Frank mentioned the property that could have been developed with two sixty-five-foot buildings. There's also the two sixty-five-foot buildings that could have been where Crotty Park is. Those are just four buildings that aren't on our beach. The density from those buildings got moved. And we purposely did, I was here when we did the eighty-five foot. So we did the eighty-five foot for a reason. That was what the developers agreed to with the city when that pud was put in place. It was the single-family homes to the west, the townhomes in the middle, and the high-density area was to the east of that development on the west side of A1A. And we looked at that as a great compromise to get the density off the beach. So this has been fifteen years that I have been working on this and that Frank and Mark and I have been dealing with this project. This isn't just the last seven years. We intentionally did this back then because it was smart development for our city. We looked at the tax revenue that was going to come in, you know, we have problems with reserves right now, we have a high millage rate. And this is a beneficial project for our city to be fiscally responsible for the citizens of our city. And we knew that fifteen years ago, and we finally have gotten to that point where we can honestly say we're delivering what we promised fifteen years ago.
Yep.
So I voted for this, and I'm going to vote again for it tonight.
Thank you Dominic. Courtney, one thing, I know it's come up, and it has come up through people that have talked to me on the streets, and I know it's not for this particular ordinance, but I don't want it to slide the so-called term beach rentals of chairs and so forth. Can we make sure that comes back sooner than later if we can get?
We can put that in the preliminary master plan, you know, developer's agreement when we get that.
I think it's, peace, that's great. But also, I might like to see that maybe expanded across to our other parks and so forth, so it doesn't turn into jet ski rentals and so forth of that nature.
Okay, yeah, we can, I think Cocoa Beach did a very similar ordinance just recently that we can.
And you know, to stress enough on this is, yes, this has taken a long time, but this was really handed to us from the government.
Yep.
Who said they needed X number of units in this project so that their privatization of the government housing could occur. And
I agree with that.
Yes ma'am, thank you.
Because that's
Goodbye.
Air Force agreement.
Thank you.
I don't need any.
Okay. Sorry you have to be that way. Not what I like, but.
I don't need your agreement.
Okay. So anyway, it, unfortunately, in a way, and a lot of times, is we take ourselves back this number of years, and we weren't in the city. I'm glad you're in our city. But a lot of this stuff is just coming to fruition now that was planned years ago and took a long time to do that. So I'm in a good place. I thank you, everybody, the staff, for the hard work on this.
Just one quick thing. You mentioned the social media aspect of it, and I don't very often get stopped when I'm working by people to talk about this stuff, but I can tell you that what you have done to handle it, from what the outsiders have said, has been very good. Okay? It's, it's become very apparent that this is a small group effort that is leading this up, and most people are just kind of looking at it and going, "How far can this little group go with this stuff?" Okay? So I guess my point is, is the, the understanding by the general public that what is out there is so warped versus the reality of it. So I'm just, I'm saying is to caution you on spending too much time doing it. I know you're going to have to follow up as you always do, and I get that. But most of the general public is looking at this going, "Whoa, has this gotten bent?" I mean, it's been going on for a year and a half on everything, from when we turn on the lights to when we flush the toilet to, you know, how often we mow the yard. Everything gets on this by these five or six little people that are doing this. But the public's really aware of it, and some of them are very frustrated that it just doesn't stop. So, but congratulations on what you've done, but just, it's out there.
I do want to say one more thing on that, because I know Courtney gets, you know, she gets attacked quite regularly, and she's got a pretty thick skin as she handles it. And I mean, the attacks that have been on all of us, it's been, the problem that I'm seeing now is people can't have, and there's some really wonderful people that voice their opinions, and they're pleasant to speak to because we can disagree. We might not always agree on everything, but when you resort to calling people crackheads, Matt Fleming called me a crackhead, by the way, on social media for thousands and thousands of people to see, and people that associate with him, that's what I see. So if you want me to think highly of you, you associate with somebody that's calling me a crackhead, I'm pretty sure I don't smoke crack. I think you can tell. I have offshore bank accounts that I've been getting money from all of the developers. So I figured out finally, and the Beatles are going to kill me for saying this, but I figured I'm funding my crack habit with all my offshore bank accounts that I have all my money at. It's funny, but my kids, like my mother-in-law is the one that told me about the crack comment. So she messaged me, and she was very upset that that was put out there about me. And, you know, if you disagree with me, that's okay. I try to manage myself pretty nicely, and I will try to be respectful, but I, my tolerance is very low with people that are just getting downright nasty. And we were in this world where nobody can have a difference of opinion without somebody being angry and screaming and walking out. And if you don't get your way, you throw a temper tantrum. Last meeting, I was called an alcoholic. I guess I have addiction issues, apparently.
She's kidding, by the way.
I'm kidding. This is a joke. I'm not being serious. I just, I just don't think that the air of what is going on out there is accomplishing anything at all. What it is, is it's stressing everybody out. I don't know how many people are spending time just like, I don't even go on Nextdoor because people tell me just don't do it. I'm pretty sure it's, I'm pretty sure I would not like whatever I saw. So I would just like to ask that people just, you know, I mean, I guess it's too much probably, but just maintain yourself. If you have an opinion, give your opinion. It doesn't have to be nasty. You don't have to call people names and try to slander people's reputations. The things that are said about this woman, I have known her since she was fifteen years old. I grew up here. I went to Hoover, I went to Satellite. I've lived here over thirty years, okay? I've seen it grow, I've seen it change, I've seen it get bigger, I've seen it get smaller. And she's worked her butt off to get where she's at, and she doesn't deserve a lot of the stuff that is being said about her. And I'm just, I'm over it. I'm just, I'm totally over it. So there's that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. If there are no further comments, call the vote.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosicky?
No.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Grimer?
Yes.
Mayor Katina?
Yes, motion passes. Staff, thank you. We can go in for an hour and twenty. Let's take a couple, well, we're gonna take a five, I've been asked to do a five-minute break right here.
Okay.
Okay?
Where are you going?
Now, with our recess, we'll move on to agenda item nine, discuss take action on the purchase and installation of playground, excuse me, equipment for Pelican Beach Park.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hi.
So before you tonight, we have a proposal for a new playground at Pelican Beach Park. We've been without a playground now for several months. Unfortunately, the one that we had there previously was a lemon and started deteriorating well before, sorry, well before it was supposed to. We went back and forth with the company, they were not very responsive, you know, they offered us a discount on another playground, but we did several warranty claims with them. That company was Playmart. So over the, we ended up ultimately removing the playground because it was dangerous, and even though we had cautioned off the playground, kids would still rip the caution tape off of it and climb on it. So ultimately, we pulled it out. So I've been working for several months with Advanced Recreational Concepts. Jane is here tonight, so she can help answer any questions. So she works with the church on their new playgrounds that just had their ribbon cutting, so they're local and very, very attentive. So she's been great to work with. So the proposal, the total cost that we're looking for this evening is for a hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents. What that is, is two complementary structures at the park. It'll fill that space really nicely. The old playground was really small.
It was too small, yeah.
Yeah, it was really too small, had a lot of empty space. So we have currently budgeted seventy thousand in our capital assets fund, so the remaining forty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents would come from the city's reserves.
Thank you. Quick question on the playground. I know that place was used incredibly. And it's a big hole there when people are bringing their kids to the beach and so forth. We really need to have it. Safety as it relates to the durability of this product. And obviously, before, we thought in good faith that that product was good. And obviously, it wasn't. So I saw the, because I was at the dedication ceremony of the other one, and it really looks great. So in your judgment, because I know you.
Yes. I'm confident in this product that we have, that they've done other playgrounds along the east coast of Florida, so it holds up in our really, really harsh conditions. The recycled plastic material has a really strong life, and we have somebody locally that we can go to when we do have any kind of issues, warranty issues.
So the environment's good, it's a recycle program. And have they built them that, you know, that playground's unique, it's right next to the beach, obviously. So I just want to make sure that it's safe for the kids and that it has a life to it. And everything wears out. I mean, you buy an air conditioner, you know, ten years later, you spend the money again. But I want to make sure that we get a good life out of, and make the division of that expense that, you know, we got a good use out of it.
Right. Is there another, would you mind coming up?
Need to get a podium. That's fine, whatever.
Wherever you feel comfortable.
Sorry, dancing here. Sure.
Hi, for the record, my name is Jane, and I work with Advanced Recreational Concepts. I'm happy to be here. I was with you guys again earlier when we worked on the Satellite Beach project. So it's good to see you all again. Happy to talk about the product personally and of course professionally. I want to share with you that the recycled plastic product that this particular playground design is made of is, if you can think of it in the simplest of forms, it's your milk jugs at work. Much of the material, the posts and the decking and the railing, has got a consumer's, a post-recycled material in it. The other parts that are plastic, like roots and slides, are called a roto-molded plastic, although they're not ultimately recycled plastic, but they're all made with a durability and a good life expectancy. The warranty on this playground has some of the parts, like posts, that have lifetime warranties. I've seen these things last twenty years. I suggest that, my territory runs all up and down the coast, and Brevard County is just, I love it here, but it's really harsh on metal. It's very difficult. We sell shade structures as well, and metal structures just really take a beating here. We've got a lot of salt air and a lot of great stuff about that that we come to the beach for, but it's not conducive to playgrounds. So the plastic material in this is one that I can honestly say, I think you're going to be looking at this and saying it's fairly maintenance-free in comparison to perhaps a metal structure. I think one of the things that Cassie and I talked about, and I didn't see the other project, I apologize, or the way that it was manufactured, but I think one of the big differences from the description she shared with me is that the other plastic playground, you would expect plastic to have a good life expectancy, but I believe it was more of a waffle type of a manufacturer. So it wasn't a solid plastic type of a design. This product that we're talking about is a solid extruded piece of lumber-type board and/or posts. So much so to say that even though they had the integrity that we're looking for, to give you structural integrity on the playground itself, the weight of it is incredible. When you compare like a six-by-six post or a four-by-four post that's made out of the extruded plastic, it's very heavy. Because it's solid, there's no open pieces in there. Thus to say that they've lasted well in school environments and beachside environments. Patrick Air Force Base just installed two of them in their housing developments here in Brevard County, because that's what they wanted. They wanted something that was going to last, that they didn't have to maintain so often as the metal, or replace as often as a metal product. So I've gone on and on. Other questions?
I just had a quick one. How long have you guys been in business for?
ARC, Advanced Recreational Concepts, has been in Brevard County, designing playgrounds, selling playground products, and installing playgrounds for like twenty to twenty-five years. And most of our workers live in Brevard County, and, yeah.
These are already in Satellite Beach. I ride my bike through Patrick Air Force Base housing there. They're in that little area, right around that little cul-de-sac at the end over there. So I've seen them, I looked at them. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase and installation of the playground equipment from Advanced Recreation Concepts in the amount of a hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents, with seventy thousand dollars currently budgeted and the forty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine and sixty-nine cents to come from the city's reserves.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilwoman Gibson.
I just want to say one more thing. I kind of worked with Cassie on this with a little bit because Courtney and I found these climbing structures when we were out at one of these League of Cities events, and I had, I'm originally from Iowa, and in this little, little town in the middle of Iowa, I'm talking, they have like a Tyson, like kill slaughter plant, like this is this little town. They had the most amazing playground I had ever seen in my entire life, and it was very similar to the second phase of this with all the climbing ropes. And, you know, anytime you go to Pelican, where are the kids? They're in the sea grapes, climbing on the trees. They're not playing on the playground. So when Cassie, we knew that this needed to be replaced, and I was like, "Please, please, please, can we try to figure out how to make a climbing structure for these kids to be on, and then it's going to have the shades on it too?" Yes. And so then, that was another request that we've had in the past, is the heat and for the children, so it'll protect them from the temperature. I'm super excited about it. I'm going to be playing on it. I'm just saying, like, I'm excited. Not today, never today.
Okay, any other questions? At this time, opening up for, excuse me, public comment on agenda item nine.
On Fergus one thirty-nine, uh, one thirty-five, Maple. Just a question. The problems we've had along the beach at the parks have been the metal and the roofs and stuff like that. I am sure that this structure is held together with metal bolts and nuts and stuff. The question is, are they corrosion-resistant? Are they a high-grade stainless steel or something else that is not going to rust, not going to corrode, or isn't aluminum that's going to get nasty in the salt air? You know, is, that's, that's the key thing, is what's going to You know, is, that's, that's the key thing, is what's going to hold it together? Is that going to be resistant?
Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, I checked on that, 'cause I'm aware of that as well, John. So, I looked into that, and it is all stainless hardware.
And it is, and, you know, because this is the beach, it's very similar to like, you know, the Pelican Beach clubhouse and also the pavilion roofs. They're supposed to be, you know, a metal roof is twenty-five-year, you know, sometimes forty roof. Ours lasts nine, because it's the beach, you know, it's just the way it is. And we'll get very high-quality roofs, but we replace them every nine to ten years, I mean, just life. But in these instances, with the metal pieces, our public work staff check them constantly, and then we order replacement metal parts. So, that, they'll do that, and that, they make those parts available. That's what I looked in, and it's in these materials that they, they will replace those parts for, you know, like, we order them and we do that for, to keep it up, and it makes it last longer. The last playground, though, it was the plastic pieces that were failing.
It was, yeah. It wasn't the metal pieces that we were having problems with. When the, the plastic, like, posts were breaking, the inside looked like it was honeycomb. And I don't think that they were meant to be that way.
Mm-hmm. So, there's, there are structural issues with the actual plastic. So, the, but the metal, the metal we will end up replacing, and I'm not kidding, three years from now, we'll be calling them for metal pieces. It's just the environment that we're in.
Okay. The public podium still open?
Do you have the structures picked out that you're doing?
We do, yeah.
Yeah, okay. That's fine, I was looking at them. What age group are those for?
One of them is from two to twelve, and the other, I believe, is five to twelve.
Five to twelve. Okay, so like, big people can go on those? And not just, you know?
They're sturdy enough for.
Yeah, well, okay, that's fine.
Diane and Mindy, you can go on the playground, okay?
Well, you know, that's important. I like to play when my grandkids come to visit. I just don't sit and look at them. I mean, that's no fun.
We'll meet you over there with ours.
Like, how am I supposed to stay agile? Yes, who wants to go to the, what do you call it, Beach Fitness or whatever, that kind of gym? The other thing is the reserves. Is that, is that taking fifty thousand, close to fifty thousand dollars out of the reserves for playground equipment? Is that?
Yes and no. We say that now because that's the most conservative way of describing it to the public, because if, like, usually at the end of the year, we have, we come under budget, so we will able to absorb some of those costs. So, it may be fifty thousand from reserves, it may be twenty thousand, it may be five. So, we don't know really yet, but the worst-case scenario is, yes, fifty thousand will come out of reserves.
Okay.
Or forty-eight, I'm sorry, but that's rounded out.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I know the other meeting we had, we talked about how the general came in. It was a general, right? He came in and said that you need so much in your reserves. So, it just was surprising to hear that all of a sudden we're taking fifty thousand.
Different account.
Huh?
We have an account now for, I'll use the term hurricanes or really disasters, so that, we've broken that into a separate account.
Oh, so you have, you're having multi-reserves now?
Yes.
Oh, okay, good to know, good to know. Okay. What do you think, do I have any more? No, no, I think I'm done. Thanks.
Thank you.
We also bring in a good deal of income in the park, about twenty to twenty-five thousand a year in private rentals of those pavilions. So, that can help with offsetting the cost of replacing a playground.
Thank you. Any further comment in public? Here are none, bring it back to council. Want any further counsel?
I should, one quick question. Was it a better deal to do both structures at once rather than to do one at a time?
It is, yeah, because if, to mobilize twice for the install, there's, you're gonna add cost, and then, you know, every year, the cost of things goes up a little bit, so you're gonna see an increase in cost if we wait.
Thank you.
Further?
Councilwoman Rosicky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Katina?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
When are you, we gonna start that, Sam?
We are gonna put the orders tomorrow.
That's great.
We're ready.
Good luck.
Ready to run.
All right.
And then production time, things.
Yeah, they're probably gonna be in production for probably about six to eight weeks, and, but we'll be looking into that one as soon as the order gets placed. We deal with the manufacturing. We have two different manufacturers we're dealing with, so we've gotta kind of coordinate their production times, and then we'll work to get the installation going, and Cassie will be involved in that one.
Great, thank you very much.
Councilmember wants any updates, by all means, give her a hug, and she can share with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Okay. Moving on to agenda item ten, and there's a few different portions here, so let's start with.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mindy Gibson as our vice mayor.
I'll second.
I'll second, I have a motion, I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Any further comments?
Yeah, just one thing. I just wanna thank council and you, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity to be vice mayor. It was a good process and got to help out in a number of ways when needed, so thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
Okay, any further? I don't think we make public comment on this, this is a council.
No.
Councilwoman Rosicky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
And Mayor Katina?
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Space Coast League of City voting delegates, normally it's been the mayor and the city manager.
You wanna keep it that way?
I'd like to.
I'd like to bring up, I've served on the board of directors for the League of Cities for the last five years as an officer of the league, and I have an opportunity to be appointed to the Florida League of Cities Board as our delegate from the Space Coast League, but I have to be a member of the board to be able to do that. And that seat, it's always been the mayor, and it's always been the city manager. It's an opportunity for me to do something that I've been looking at doing for a long time, and I'm just.
The alternate member is a seat.
The alternate, I don't think I, as an alternate member, I could, I mean, I don't have the clarification, but I don't think as an alternate member I can serve.
Think you can. You could do, for this year, him as the delegate, and then you as the alternate, and then I will just go to the meetings with you and boss you around like I normally do.
I mean, it's, I'm just asking to be able to have that opportunity. I've put five years in as a, as a director on our, on our Space Coast League, and it's just an opportunity that I was hoping that you would allow me to have.
It's fine, it doesn't matter to me. Then I'll be able to work, so. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion, as long as you're in agreement with this, Frank, to have Dominic Montanaro as the Space Coast League of Cities voting delegate, with the city manager as the alternate.
I would make the mayor as the alternate.
As the mayor as alternate.
Yeah.
That's fine.
And then I can just be at the meetings.
Okay. Is that all right with you?
That's fine.
Okay. All right, that's the motion.
Second.
Yeah, I have a motion by, by, well, Councilman Breimer, second by Vice Mayor.
Wow, that's weird sounding.
I don't get wrong, I'm gonna be up today. Okay, any discussion?
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosicky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
And Mayor Katina?
Yes. Okay, moving on here, a suggestion, and I can't make the motion, so we can, I think, wrap up this whole thing. Is everybody good where they're sitting?
Yes.
Because I don't wanna take away from you, you just got on the youth council. I know you like your boards, you've been on the pension. Mark, everybody good?
Yeah.
Okay, so, motion to.
I'll make a motion to keep everybody where they are in their respective positions.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Breimer. Any further?
Is this so, the South Beaches Coalition, am I gonna stay on that then? Okay, all right. I like that one, too.
Okay. Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosicky?
Yes.
I'm sorry, did, who seconded that? Was it Breimer?
Yeah, Mark seconded it.
Okay. Councilwoman, or Vice Mayor Gibson?
Yes.
Sorry.
It's okay.
And Mayor Katina?
Yes. Okay, great. That's it, I think, from that one. Got everything? Anybody happy?
Yeah.
Good. Moving on to the next agenda, item eleven. It's the proposed agenda for our next city workshop and proposed agenda for our next